It was a struggle.
I put it in there like, oh.
I know.
Chris is gonna like it the day I did it.
Really?
I would like to call to order the May 15, 2023 Canal Winchester City Council Work Session. Roll call.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milligan.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Also in attendance, we have Mayor Ebert, Public Service Director Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, and Finance Director Amanda Jackson. And we've got Construction Services Director Bill Sims, who will be up for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The 2023 Street Program, we did have our pre-construction meeting for that project. Decker Construction will be starting on some asphalt pavement patches and repairs outside of some of the overlay areas here in the next week or so. And the sidewalk contractor will be in town right around the first of June to do the sidewalk program work and some other miscellaneous concrete items. That project will run longer this year because we're going to be doing the pavement work after the waterline work and the die addition. So, you know, we'll have that contract probably open until the fall this year. The Three Seasons Shelter at McGill, the endwood structure, wood frame structure is ordered and expecting shop drawings any day now for that. But we're looking at roughly about 18-week lead time. So, that's kind of a critical path for us. So, probably expect to see some site work occur there first and then a little downtime while we await the structure delivery. And the 2023 Waterline Replacement Project, as you know, the project was awarded to Elite Escvading. We did, we had the pre-construction meeting scheduled for next Wednesday with that contractor. They're anticipating trying to get in pretty quickly. They have materials on order, so we'll probably see activity potentially that first week of June on that project, starting primarily in the die addition and then a short segment on Groport Road has to be done early as well. So, after our pre-con, we go through the schedule in detail. We'll get the next round of informational letters out to residents, kind of tightening that schedule up for them. And McGill Phase Two, AMH&amp;T has started into detailed design for the pickleball court area. We're calling that 2A. And then the baseball fields is 2B with the dog park being considered 2C. Those two areas, we're starting on some environmental efforts we need to make. So, basically kind of taking a phased approach to that project. On the private side, Evans Farm is, you know, continuing there. They did place curbs for Robin Way last week. So, you can clearly see the road extension now. All the utility piping is in the ground with the sanitary. They still have some process piping to put in the lift station. So, it'll be maybe a month or more before that stuff is done. And there's a little bit of testing to do on the waterline as well. So, but all in all, that's moving along pretty well. And clearly can see that getting completed this summer. And the Sheets on Gander Road at Winchester Pike, they've started construction on the drop right turn lane into the Sheet site from Gander Road. So, you've probably seen some activity up that way if you've gone by there. And right away work, AT&amp;T's been working on their punch list for the work they did here on Waterloo Street. I think they placed some of the sidewalk panels today that were missing. They've got a couple spots to fix in the path, or they need to refix in the path, basically. So, they'll be doing that. And again, we have permits, documents submitted for the Ashbrook subdivision for the extension of fiber in that neighborhood. We've not issued the permit yet. We're still waiting on them to submit their bonding requirements. So, I expect that to happen though, yet this year. Any questions?
How many courts are there on that pickleball, on that A there, that first phase there?
We are at five courts, yeah.
Thank you.
When AT&amp;T comes back to do their punch-out list, are they going to be able to get the black stain off the pavement on the pavers where they had their plate?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's still some cold patch material that's on there that needs to come off. There may potentially be some staining from the material that will wear off. I mean, that's, you know, basically a very thin bit of asphalt that's stuck on there. But what there's, yeah, there's still some bumpy aggregate stuff that needs to be scraped off.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there plans, AT&amp;T, is there plans to bring fiber to the entire community, like every subdivision? Are they, do you know, or?
They haven't shown us that yet at this point. I would think so, but I'm not, you know, I'm sure, you know, their logic has been probably some of the higher-density-type neighborhoods, probably, you know, they get a little more bang for their buck. So, I mean, they've done Westchester or the Balko-Westchester, you know, Ashbrook. They actually did some work in Canal Co. a couple of years ago, you know, kind of prior to this push, and started feeding stuff into not just the new section, but the older section. So, you know, I don't know.
So, are they doing downtown then? Or has that been done?
No.
No? They're not? Okay.
I have not seen anything on that, you know. I think here it's been, I remember about two years ago, they were interested in trying to install some small cell antennas in town as well. And that was, that was, you know, a priority. And we got through that whole process. And, you know, the permits expired more than a year ago for that work. So, I'm not sure, you know, what changed along this line. But, yeah, as far as their ultimate plan to build out, I mean, all I'm seeing right now is they're seem to be kind of targeting on larger subdivisions. That's both in Columbus area, I've seen that. And I know they're also in some of the Pickerington subdivisions as well.
Mr. Sims, forgive me if this isn't in your wheelhouse, but you brought up the baseball fields. My memory serves, if it turns me correctly, when we were talking about that last, I feel, I'm sorry, is there an echo? Is that just?
Just yours.
Okay. Then we, we kind of felt like there was some sticker shock with that. I guess the issue that was brought to me from some residents has been, why, why can't we, you know, invest some money into the fields at Hanners first before building new fields at McGill? You know, getting new fencing, getting an actual parking lot out there so people aren't parking in the mud, things like that. So, if there's an answer to that question, I'd love to hear it.
I like parking in the gravel. It makes me feel like I'm in a small town, darn it.
I don't think it's even gravel, actually.
I will say from a JR D side, there is a need for additional fields. The fields at Hanners, the city does a pretty good job, I feel, at putting them together every year for us and getting it seeded. They do put all the, because we have to try to avoid this quick dry that ruins our field. So, they do a whole good job of grading our fields. But from a JR D standpoint, I will tell you that we have more kids that want to play baseball than we have fields available.
Okay. I, I, that's, that's fine. I don't doubt.
I don't know from their answer, but that's.
Yeah. I don't, I don't doubt the city doesn't take care of them. It's just, I want to be able to answer that question when asked.
Sure. And I think probably, you know, Matt can touch base on this, but, you know, I think with Hanners, we've pretty much been a pretty consistent track of making improvements at the park. I mean, you know, we've done dugouts, we've done field improvements, we've done some of the, you know, outfield fencing. We've added parking, things like that. But, yeah, so it's always been kind of incremental over a long period of time. So, I don't, Matt can touch on what he thinks the future holds there. And then, you know, you know, I know initially there's some sticker shock with, you know, the Phase Two stuff on McGill. But it's also want to keep in mind that, you know, we enter into this process kind of really conservative. And, you know, as we refine things, then we can start to kind of narrow it down. But, you know, as we refine, we typically expect to kind of go down rather than, we don't want to go up, you know, after we started, you know, thinking what a budget will be and so forth. So, you know, we don't want to get Amanda upset with us. So, you know, usually the goal is to be, start out very conservative, you know, and then start doing things to drive the price down. So.
That's a good question, though.
I just want to be able to answer the question when asked.
And some of the things that you mentioned are kind of some maintenance items. If there's some fence out there, I'm not familiar with where the, any damaged fence is. I know it's original from, like, 96. And we have curbed some of the, they put pepper on it. So, they quit doing that a while ago. So, but like the parking lot, there's not very good drainage out there in that part. So, you know, putting impervious area on it, it's just going to cause a little bit more problems with that, or at least it could. So, that's something that we would look at. We just haven't really programmed anything else in there. After we did the large project where we added drains around the fields to make them a little bit more playable.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Can pickleball courts double as a tennis court? Are they going to be lined both ways or will they just be lined as pickleball primarily?
They will just be lined as pickleball primarily. We did have some discussion about whether we could, you know, ultimately have the asphalt footprint be large enough that, you know, it could be converted to tennis courts, you know, 20 years from now or something if somebody was interested in that. But, but, no, they'll be set up so that they're just pickleball courts.
Yeah, I think that's my only concern is just if, if pickleball, which does not seem to be losing traction, don't get me wrong, but if for some reason it loses traction, I mean, like currently we have four tennis courts?
Six.
The high schools?
We have six, yeah.
Well, those aren't ours. Those are the high schools. If you ask them, those are the high schools. Those aren't ours.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're shared. They're shared.
They're shared.
Yeah. Not according to the high school.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, everything's kind of cyclical, seems like, you know, things will be hot and then they'll get quiet and then they'll come back, you know. And even tennis is like that sometimes for us. So, but, you know, just having some thought in mind that, yeah, can something double something later on, you know, possibly? So, without having to do a lot of, a lot of major work.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Request for council action. We have Resolution 23-015, which is tabled. Do I have a motion to untable?
Can we see where Mr. Boggs is on our ethics review?
We can.
Thank you. So, I have spoken to a staff attorney at the Ethics Commission. We expect that the commission will be acting on it at its May meeting, which is late in this month. So, no definitive answer yet.
So, when you have it in a meeting, do they make a decision or do they, do they issue an opinion or do they talk about it and maybe table it? What?
Their staff attorneys write up opinions and then the commission itself adopts them at, when they meet. Now, if the commission has questions or doesn't agree with the conclusion of the opinion or wants some other amendment, then they give that feedback to the staff attorney and send it back for another meeting. But in speaking with him, they try to iron all of those things out to the extent possible before going to the public meeting.
Thank you. And my next question would be, if we miss, we don't do anything this meeting, are we still okay with the time clock of three readings? Oh, I guess the resolution, there isn't three readings, right?
Right, right. These are on those resolutions. And the charter just talks about adoption by July 1st, as I recall.
By Ju-, okay, so we can go right up to June on this. Okay. All right. So, this will remain tabled? The councils will?
Yes, please.
All right. Resolution 23-016, do I have a motion to untable?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to untable Resolution 23-016 by Mr. Shea, second of my Ms. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Okay. So, would anyone like to take the lead? Mr. Shea, have at it.
So, I was in Louisiana last week and driving around and I called Mr. Boggs and asked him to go ahead and write up some amended ordinances for the mayor's salary after hearing in some very enthusiastic, long-term citizens of Canal Winchester and their opinions regarding the mayoral salary coupled with the city administrator's position. After hearing those comments from several people, I decided to put on the agenda 20, 30, and 40. So, we have four salaries out here right now. And I would hope to have the body just start taking up or down votes. We've talked about it and we've talked about it. So, that's what I'd like to see tonight is us just as a body start taking yes and no votes. And we either get somewhere or we don't. But at least we're trying. So, that's my intent of having these numbers here. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. And I'm sending some stuff down your way. There's two sheets per packet here. So, last week at the meeting, we had discussed, did I get everybody?
Two sheets per person, yes.
Per person, please. Yes. And all this is as the five-year for record. It's just a five-year capital improvement plan from Matt. But I wanted to go over a couple of things. I was thrilled to see Patrick's resolutions on here because I do think that we can come to a resolution with these. But just wanted to touch on a couple of things. So, last week I had made the comment about reducing. And then I'd also commented how it felt like a lot of people had changed their opinion from the March 6 meeting. So, I did bring that with me in case anybody needs to reiterate that one. But the other thing that I hope everybody's had a moment to look over, in the packet that they presented to us when they presented this, the mayor's job description and the city administrator position, when you look through those and you really dive into it, there's, there's a lot of similarities. It's a lot of the same position, except the mayor holds veto power. Everything else can be delegated. Everything else is written in different ways. But it is still in the job description for the city administrator as well, if you actually go and look at it. And then the comment, you know, to reducing the salary for me was that the money could be used elsewhere. So, I printed out the CIP and I just took a look and highlighted for you in yellow some of the things that for $100,000 over the next two years could be done that are way more beneficial to our residents and more equitable to our residents.
I noticed one of them is water repaired to your street.
Listen, I was looking at dollar amounts. But the McGill House renovations are on here. There's some of the Washington Street pass. These are all things that are very equitable to our residents, that $100,000 could be moved up in the plan if we were to save some money on the mayor's salary. And again, if you really go through that PowerPoint that was presented to us and start matching these up, you will find they are almost identical to the one on this page. So, that's why I'm asking you to please consider a reduction of the salary. The veto power is the difference. But the city administrator, by job description, can handle a lot of what the mayor can. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Shea. The agenda is A, B, and C, 40, 30, and 20. And then on these sheets, you've got 50, 40, and 30 on the resolutions. Mr. Boggs?
So, I'll jump in and take that one from Mr. Shea because part of that was my running with, with the direction that he gave me. So, the 50 is the same numbers that you've been looking at, but reflecting that the city administrator position has been approved. So, it doesn't have that contingency language that was in there before. There should be 40, 30, and 20 in your packet. And if there's not, that's, that's on me. But we do have that prepared and I believe Ms. Pierce has that.
Okay. And all these come with a purse pickup and the 6,000 for mileage?
The only thing that I revised in any of them was to reflect that the city administrator has been adopted and the dollar amount of the salaries. So, it's starting at a, you know, $50,000 base for 24, goes up 3% for 25, and keeps all of those fringe benefits that had been previously discussed.
So, Mr. Clark, in the last meeting, what you did mess was Lori did ask for a reduction or potential for us to consider a reduction in the car from 6,000 to 3,000. And then we discussed doing, instead of the 13.5 for family insurance, taking it to what we get, which would be the single coverage only, which also reduces the package down. So, those were two things that we had to consider.
Okay. And the purse pickup would remain the same?
The purse pickup would remain the same.
Okay.
And at that time, when Ms. Amos had mentioned the 3,000 possible deduction, I mentioned the, as, instead of, in lieu of, maybe reducing that, just not adding the purse pickup, which was $10,000. And that, that was mentioned as well.
Okay.
So, I will say purse pickup is 10%. So, if the reduction in the salary is reflective to a new salary, it would decrease.
Be like 40. If 40 was adopted, let's say, then it'd be 4,000 would be the purse pickup?
Yes.
Okay.
So, currently with insurance, we are 13.5, a $6,000 car allowance. And then if we added the purs, you are looking at 30,000. So, 13.5 plus 6 plus 10.
And that's single medical?
That's, that's family coverage.
I actually read it from family right now.
Yes, I just took what we currently.
I thought family medical was 22.
I thought it was 28.
Right.
Hold on. You might have written it down wrong.
It reads that the mayor would be eligible to select family, which is the 22, roughly, roughly 30.
So, with single 13.5, did I just, I, thank you. I just wrote my name wrong then.
But if that person chooses family, we don't pick up the family portion of that? Yes or no? I'm confused.
The way it's written, yes or no?
The way it's written currently. And then we had discussed changing it to where they have the option for single coverage, which is what we all have the option for.
Okay. So, you, you should assume for the purposes of financial that the worst-case scenario would be the 22. Not worst case, but the largest case.
The large scenario, yes.
Ms. Jackson, I have a question for you as well. Are we able to use the payroll funds for other projects if we move forward with what we're speaking of?
So, I guess that would depend on if they had been budgeted as payroll expenditures or not. If I'm starting a budget and I know what that payroll number is going to be, then I'm not going to put extra money in the payroll because it can only be spent on that. If the budget has already been passed and we choose not to spend that payroll money, council would need to authorize us moving that money out of payroll to spend it on something else. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, as of right now, that we haven't budgeted for next years?
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So, if we did the $3,000 car, the single rate at 13.5 plus the 10 pickup on a, that's 20,500 in additional benefits if we went with a $40,000 salary. So, that would be a total of 60,500 in salary plus benefits.
Mr. Boggs, could you weigh in just a little bit? So, Mrs. Amos talks about the difference in responsibility between the city administrator role and the executive mayor position, and that being one of veto power. In my mind, that's the executive power of a mayor is even beyond that. Is that true or false? Is my thinking that yes, that, because the ultimate responsibility for the going on in the city of Canal Winchester rests on the mayor's shoulders, correct?
Correct.
So, there's more than just the tasks on a piece of paper. There is the level of responsibility that goes along with the title.
You're, I mean, the executive power ultimately does fall to him in the final decision, again, and veto would go to him. All things can be delegated and all parts of the job description that are in the mayor are also in our city administrator. But I understand what you're saying. He does ultimately have executive, correct? Until we review the charter and then...
It's kind of like the CEO of a corporation. So, the CEO of the corporation likely delegates everything in most large companies anyway. And so, but at the end of the day, if Wall Street has an issue with that company, it's the CEO who's going to be asked to come speak before the Senate. So, I'm just, I kind of would ask council to weigh that in as well when you make your decision.
I think one of the things that's been weighing heavy on my mind as we consider this is truly the fact, and we've discussed this time and time again, our current charter has no hours. We've been fortunate. Our mayor shows up every day, probably 50 to 60 hours a week. We may not get that next time. So, we also have to factor in that our charter doesn't protect us against any hours. So, at 120,000 for, you know, I'm, whatever we decide to pay our city administrator. And then if we keep the mayor's salary even close to what it is and that person shows up for one hour a week, like, we have nothing to back us up on that. So, I would just want to make sure we're also playing into our minds this position. We've been fortunate.
Yeah. This is not an hourly job, though. This is a responsibility position.
Yeah.
Mr. Boggs, if we did have someone that was elected as a mayor and they did not fulfill, or we felt that they did not fulfill their duties, what actions would we have other than waiting till the next election week?
So, one option that wouldn't necessarily be an option of council per se, but of the electorate, would be to petition for recall of that person, which recall can be done for any reason after a year or six months has expired. I believe here it's six months has expired on a person's term. In terms of council action to remove an official, that is governed by Section 11.01 of the Charter, which says that where a person sought to be removed for cause from office is the mayor, then the president of council acts as a charging official alleging that that person has committed malfeasance, misfeasance in office. And then that is essentially prosecuted before the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Boggs, does the mayoral position have any personal liability? Well, let me, let me clarify a little bit. Any personal liability while performing the role of mayor?
That's a good question.
So, the, I believe the Charter has a provision where all elected officials are bonded and subject to the city's insurance coverage. If the mayor or any elected official were to perform, you know, something outside the scope and incur liability for that, then that could be personally applied to them if it's outside the scope of their official position. If the question is sort of getting down the road to whether a person elected mayor essentially would commit theft in office by just not showing up, my initial reaction is that answer would be no, that the accountability would be either at the next election or through recall or the Charter removal process.
Well, I just had some numbers thrown up there.
Yeah.
Because I like numbers.
Yeah.
There, I don't know if you guys can read that, but it's from the Morpsey Survey. This is the 22 survey data. And it lists the cities with no city manager or city administrator where there's totally a mayor and responsible, and their ranges are there. And they range from 12,000 to 204,000. Must be nice to be Andrew Ginter. But when we get down into the mayor or city administrator, city manager or city administrator, the salaries come down substantially, especially when you take out one of them, which is a township administrator, which is a totally different role. It's a similar role, different form of government. But that, we'd argue that a township administrator belongs down in the next slide, which is where the city administrator salaries are, the city manager salaries are. So, when we take out the outlier, I mean, I see numbers from 9,500 for the city council president, mayor of Upper Arlington, Asheville, 13,000, city of Dublin, 15,750, Grove City, 40,000, Groport, 26,000, New Albany, 26.1, Tassla, 15,000. Grove City, 40,000, Groport, 26,000, New Albany, 26.1, Tascala, 15,000, Powell, 12.5. So, you know, after hearing it from our enthusiastic and engaged citizenry on the mayor's salary, I would like to go ahead and move ordinance number.
Mr. Shea, before you do that, I'd like to just make a comment. My, my, where I stand on this is I still feel like we are trying to make a charter change by making these changes.
We already did.
Well, I know, and, you know, it was brought up about fiscal responsibility, and maybe that conversation should have been had before we moved forward with approving that position. So my, my concern is, we're making it a charter change pre-setting up a commission to review the charter. So that's kind of where I stand. You know, I'm all on board for reducing the salary as part of the charter change, but I don't feel it's appropriate for us to move forward trying to make those decisions prior to having the charter review board in place.
Mr. Busker, could you expla, I guess I'm not seeing where you think it's a charter change, because we're not changing the mayor's position, his obligations, we're not changing anything with the city administrator.
Well, I, I feel like we're reducing the salary to such, such a position that I don't think we're going to get qualified candidates interested in a position like this. For me, I'd rather pay a little bit higher salary and get a quality candidate. You know, I, I know that, you know, money is always an issue, but in this situation, I feel like we need to do right by our residents and put a position out there that, you know, we're going to get qualified candidates. If I look at how many people are going to jump at a chance to make $30,000, I'm not seeing the candidates that are qualified to be the mayor of my city jumping at that chance.
And I see that. I also see, you know, you look at all these cities, and thank you for putting this chart up, I, I see all these other cities who do have theirs and have reduced theirs based on the way their structures are, and, and this makes sense to me because they do, you know, they're following the hierarchy of it. But I also think as the mayor, you do it because it's something that you love. You do it because it's the community you want to protect.
Right, and like you said, we are very lucky to have the mayor that we have.
Yeah.
But there's not always going to be that person in that position. So, you know, I'm also trying to make sure we're protecting our residents in that aspect, so.
But even at 110,000, you may not get the person that's doing the job right.
Absolutely.
So.
I, I would fully anticipate that if any one of these salaries being proposed, that any candidate is still going to have a full-time job likely.
Potentially, yeah. And I, and I, you know, I think I've mentioned it before, you know, I have a decent job, love my job. Most of us have work jobs that we enjoy, and if you were just to decide to do something and take a position because you felt your heart took you to that position, for most of us, it's not something you just walk away from your job on, because in four years, you could be back in the unemployment line. So it, it's a decision that whoever runs for this has to make.
Hell, six months, they can recall you.
Six months.
I mean, you know, you might not make it month seven.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a gamble.
Mr. Shea, so what, so what happened to the, are we still looking at 40, 30, 20, or did we say we are looking at the 30, 40, 50?
We're looking at all four. There's a 50, 40, 30, 20.
Okay, thank you.
And all I'm gonna, all I'm asking for is just a up-down vote. I mean, we've got a wide-ranging view of opinions here, which is good, because that's one of the awesome things about being part of seven, is you get the different opinions. Mr. Busker, I, I disagree with you, but I do understand where you're coming from, but I do disagree with you because.
And I am only one of seven. I don't necessarily think that we have to keep it at its current salary, but I'm also definitely not at the 20 or $30,000 range.
Okay.
Mr. Shea, if you don't mind, I wanted to zero in on where you're coming from on this, because I recall previously, and maybe I misremembering, maybe I took it out of context, but I recall you agreeing with Mr. Busker to some degree that you wanted a higher salary. I think the 80,000 was out there, you wanted a higher quality candidate, and that was your reasoning?
I did.
So if, if that's the case, and you've had a change of heart, that's great. Can you maybe explain that? It was just the vocal residents?
It's the, it's our residents and what they're telling me they want to see, and that's who I work for.
All right.
I mean, it is, for me, it was that, it's that simple.
And that, that's exactly where I'm at, Patrick, and, you know, several of the people I've talked to said, you know, it should come to us as a vote. So that, that's where I'm holding.
Well, and I would say that, you know, I had a resolution to do a charter amendment that I withdrew, and I would say that, you know, one of the reasons that was given, that I agreed to do it was this body seemed to feel that it wasn't their place to put a charter initiative before the voters, that that was the responsibility of the charter commission. After speaking to people who were at the creation of that original charter, and speaking with Mr. Boggs, no, as the elected representatives of the citizens of Canal Winchester, we absolutely can decide to put a charter amendment on and give them an option to say yes or no. And that's really all I wanted to do when we were talking about that back then. And I'll probably bring it back again, because Mr. Boggs has already got it drafted up, it's just a matter of hitting insert, right?
Yeah, I think my work would be done, it's just a matter of renumbering it.
And another thing to remember, too, is 2000, I believe it was 10, that the charter did make a decision, brought it to council, and it went to the people, vote, and that's where the administrator is just now been activated and brought to us. So that is, that was all done by the people, all done by the charter, all done by vote, and that's where a charter had changed. Now, we, we did make it happen from this vote from council, and that's, that's why we are at this point. So this was all done by charter change.
And we do have to remember, there are 15 people that sit in the charter change. That never made it to the ballot for our residents to choose. It was brought up, the 15 people in the room did not, the council at the time did not move on it, so it, it never went for them to vote. I did run some real quick numbers for you. At the 20,000, just so you have them, I took the $3,000 car rate, the single coverage, 10% pickup. At 20,000, you're looking at 38.5 with everything. 30,000, you're looking at 49.5 with everything. 40,000, you're looking at 65 with everything, and 50,000, you're looking at 71.5 with everything.
And the previous conversation you had about the charter, that was 13 years ago, is that correct?
When they did the city administrator, 2010?
Yes, 13 years ago.
Two charters ago?
Quite a few years ago.
Yeah. Now, the conversation was brought up the last time, I believe, though, for the city, the mayor strong, but like I said, you've got 15 people in a room, so it didn't move. It's not a very good representation of the 9,000 people. I mean, they did a great job, it's only 15 people in a room, so.
I just want to clarify, too, because, and again, we've all been over this hundreds of times, I, I want to clarify that, and Mr. Busker, forgive me if I'm speaking on your behalf, but I, I agree with you. You know, I understand, and I think Mr. Busker understands that this is in the charter, the administrator's in the charter, there's no refuting that. It's, it's the, the reduction of the salary to this degree in that conjunction is where the issue is. And I think, and Mr. Busker said it, you know, not necessarily have an issue with, you know, lowering the mayor's salary, it's just in the conjunction with putting on the administrator. And so I would feel more comfortable about doing this after we've gone through another charter review.
And that's good. I mean, we, I think that's the thing, we can all appreciate each other's opinion.
Sure.
I would just rather spend $100,000 knowing I have two of the same jobs, I would just rather spend $100,000 on something in yellow.
Am I allowed to move these forward?
Yes.
Well, I, I was just going to make a suggestion, perhaps, of how you can at least, I don't know if you'll break the impasse, but kind of get an idea of where everybody is.
I was just going to move to vote them up-down right now, move to council.
I was going to suggest a, a show of hands, kind of a straw poll, which you can do in an open session, and just say, who's in favor of 20, who's in favor of 30? I mean, I'm not the chair, so it's up to you, Mr. Clark, if you think that's helpful.
That's very helpful, I think. Anything to conclude this? Or give me a gun. All right. So let's go, let's just start with all of them. I'll just start at the low end, 20,000. Anybody in that? Okay. 30 to, 30,000? Okay. 40,000? Okay.
That's four.
Who's, okay, 40, okay. All right.
So now you can go 40.
Then if everybody is.
And we, and we have another one, we have 50.
50,000? That's kind of where I am.
Why not? I'll ride your pony. So let's move, I've moved, I moved to move Resolution 23016 original and 23016, is that Alpha, to full council.
Now, which one are we on? Can you just?
I just, I said both of them.
He moved out.
I moved the 50 and the 40.
50 and the 40.
016 and 016 Alpha.
Okay. What if both vote, what if both pass by four votes?
So, well, you're, you vote one.
Well, they would both then go to full council, and you'd discuss those at full council as a resolution.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So we're only moving forward 40 and 50, correct?
Well, we got a vote on.
Correct.
Yeah, but, okay. So, do I have a motion? A motion is on the floor by Mr. Shea.
Can I say one thing real quick?
Yeah.
If it's, I am willing to move to 50 if it will help so that we only have one on the table for tonight. I'm willing to move to 50 because it still saves our residents 50,000 a year, so.
And I think it attracts, I think that would attract more.
So I'm willing to move on that to, to pull 40 off and move just 50, if you're okay with that, Mr. Shea, because you made the motion. That would give you five.
I got a motion on the floor.
Great. Second.
All right. Motion on the floor, by Mr. Shea, second by Mrs. Amos, to, let me, can I reiterate then?
It's to move the 50,000.
And the 40,000.
And the 40,000 vote.
To?
To full council.
Full council.
And then you can vote between those two tonight.
Vote, vote from there to, okay, okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Okay.
Hallelujah.
Mm-hmm. Old, old or new business.
There's light at the end of the tunnel.
Do we have any old or new business?
I have one item I'd like to discuss, since we have a few moments here for the next meeting.
That'd be great, that'd be great, Mr. Hare, go ahead.
We're continuing to work on building out the space here in the building, and working with Kent Power, they have decided they are no longer going to move forward with a lease on that space. So the costs have become too much for them to bear in renovating the space. They've looked at value engineering that, and they still feel that the costs don't justify a five-year lease term being in the space. So we talked to them about potentially extending that term, and they're just, their business is too uncertain, their growth trajectory is too uncertain to want to do that for a longer-term period of time. And so that's, that's the environment we're in currently. Everything costs more than you think it should, and when you try to value engineer things and change them, and you think you're going to achieve a significant cost savings, you come back and you don't necessarily achieve everything you thought you were going to get. And so we decided to, to go ahead and move forward with finishing out the space because we had the contract open. It still makes it more usable for our use and potentially for others to use. So that, that work should be wrapped up here in the next week and a half or so.
And that money was allocated a couple of years ago, correct?
It was from the original contract. So it was, we had about 150,000 left over from the original contract, and so we just allocated that. We were still within the one-year period, and we hadn't closed anything on it yet.
Perfect.
We'd already purchased all the materials, so we had, you know, essentially the drywall, the sheathing, all that was laying over there. So it was just to go ahead and have them put it up. So we proceeded with doing that, the space is nearly finished, so just wanted to have a discussion on how you all would like to proceed with seeking potential tenants for the space, or if you want to look at using it for our own internal purposes, or just wanted to have a discussion around that. Where, where they were was approximately $400,000 to finish out the space. You know, they started looking at, at changing their plans and trying to minimize those, but they were still in excess of $250,000 to, to finish out the space. And that was putting in a conference room, three hard-walled offices, and a minor restroom expansion, and a little kitchenette.
Mr. Hare, at this time, does the city have any need for that area?
We haven't discussed internally, we don't necessarily have a need, you know, to expand office space or anything in there, but we haven't really discussed internally how we might use the other space.
I guess I would appreciate knowing what this, what you as the city staff feels is a timeframe that we, because I know when we originally took over, the thought was that we would be able to expand into that at some point in time. So I don't want us to get locked into an agreement and then run out of space, and, you know, I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow by any stretch, but I guess I would like to know your timeframes as far as what you were comfortable with on the lease, like five years, I think we were all comfortable with that because we knew if the city needed it in five years, the option was there. So I guess I'd like to know long-term plans, what the city feels is going to be most beneficial. So I'm turning the question around on you a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, we can have those discussions.
I'd appreciate that.
What do you think, Mr. Hare, the potential of being able to attract somebody, if we went ahead and did the renovation and finished it out pretty much so it's ready to go, with the potential of getting and attracting another Kent Power person, you know, that would come in and take it for five years?
I want us to be careful as that, because we are a government body, and I don't want us competing with private investors, private industry, because I've seen that show happen, and it can, it can get a little dicey sometimes, so I just, I want us to be careful.
I think if you make your money back, if you rent it out at a fair price, I'm just saying to attract it, I'm not saying to give a, a, a deal to, when they come in, they would rent at fair market value rent, but it would be a revenue generating and bring workers down to our restaurants for lunch and things like that, if we could get, you know, 15, 20 people in here for five years, it's better than sitting empty for five years, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the state that it's finished in currently, you know, someone could come in and operate in that space fairly easily. You know, you could demise the area with cubicles, partition walls, things like that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that difficult. I would be afraid of finishing out the space that would then be torn out in the future because it didn't meet the needs. So right now, it's, it's a shell, and it's a flexible shell. It has restrooms, it has a, you know, minimum amount of overhead lighting, it has electricity in the walls, there's outlets all the way around all four walls, and so, you know, there's the opportunity to use the space. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to speculatively build out office space in there.
Fair, fair enough.
I see, you know, a lot of the industrial projects we have right now, they're building out 2,500 square feet of office, and they're at between 400 and 600,000 dollars to do that. I've seen that frequently over the last year or so. So it's, it can get expensive quickly. Now, we have the advantage that we already have the, the HVAC that, that runs that space, so that cost comes down a little bit, but still, there's significant costs in, in finishing out anything currently.
Okay.
Mr. Hare, do you know what roughly, just to ballpark, what it would cost to finish out the restrooms and finish the, a small kitchenette kind of area? What, like, are we talking 100 grand? What would be your best guess?
No, the restrooms are functioning. There's two restrooms in the space, and those are functioning currently.
So it really is cosmetic in nature to finish the restrooms?
Correct. And so it would just be adding a small kitchenette, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be much cost involved in doing that.
So where does the, for, in the case of Kent Power as an example, where does the cost come in for the tenant finishings coming in at 400 grand? Is it?
It's the hard-walled offices, the conference room, the drop ceilings associated with that, completing the HVAC to run into all those, all the ductwork that you would need, the electric that you would need to put in the walls of those hard-walled offices. So the mechanicals are really where a lot of that cost is.
All right, thank you.
And then the finishing, right? So the, the florings and, you know, all that thing you need to put in right now, it's, it's unfinished concrete floors. It's painted with a roadway down the middle still.
Thank you.
That goes back to McDormand days, doesn't it?
Anything further?
Yeah, if anyone has any ideas, you know, feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email. I'd be happy to pursue any of those.
Do we want to list it with a realtor? Do we want to list it with a realtor?
I, I, here's just an idea. What if we give, like, let the city go back and, like, put a three-month window around it and say, unless an idea produces itself for the city within three months, then we start actively marketing the space. That gives you guys an opportunity to discuss it, talk about potential leads among, among the city staff. And then I, I just feel like, you know, our taxpayers paid for this facility and for it to sit idle, and I, I understand all of the reasons why it's sitting idle, I would just like to see us do something, whether it's something driven by the city or if it's an outside tenant, I don't necessarily have a feeling one way or the other. I just don't want to see it sit idle for too much longer.
It may be big enough for pickleball.
Jim might get his wishes.
Matt, you have some love on this.
Go ahead, sorry.
As far as space, I think the city, well, I'm not, I don't think I know, we had talked about the space immediately in front of us and the little area there be, be, behind the executive session or the executive room is reserving that at some point in time for city employees, whatever employees they may be. I know we've talked recently about assistant directors and so now we're looking at, you know, we only have, I think, three offices left over there, Amanda, is that what we have?
Three or four.
We have four, okay. Does that include the conference room?
Yes.
The small conference room?
Yes.
Okay. So there's, there's three small offices plus what we use now for a, a small conference room. Obviously, those would be filled first, but then our next, our next idea, thought was to use the space right outside that door there and watch on the outside that wall and use the far end for whomever.
Yeah. Mr. Walker?
Some old business. Just wanted to check back in with the speakers and the possible repeaters on the light post and for the Dora area only, just see if we've had any, any action.
There was a, we had a quote at one point, then I'll, I'll get that back to you.
Was this, this, was this like many...
It's been a little while, but there was a, there's been some updates, technological updates since then.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, a lot of that will be, because we probably don't have to go under concrete or anything and with repeaters, and I don't even think that's wireless, I think it's done with repeaters if I'm, I may be wrong, but it's, I think it's come down quite a bit. But love to, love to hear. I guess that'd be mainly for the Dora area and the downtown. Thank you.
Anything further?
Move to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Walker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
We'll reconvene at seven P.M. This is council.
I'd like to call to order the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three Canal Winchester City Council meeting to order. Pledge allegiance will be led by Mr. Shea.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
For you and slip on the current state of our union.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milliken.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Time in seven oh two. First up, approval of minutes, minutes twenty-three dash zero one eight, May first, public hearing minutes, discussion. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Minutes twenty-three dash zero one nine, May first work session, minutes, discussion. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
And minutes twenty-three dash zero two zero, May first, city council meeting minutes, discussion. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Next, we have communications and petitions. Communication twenty-three dash zero zero six, Madison Township Police Statistics for April two thousand twenty-three. Communication twenty-three dash zero zero seven, National Public Works Week Proclamation. Are we doing anything with that, Mr. Peoples?
No.
Okay. Communication twenty-three dash zero zero eight, Columbus Metropolitan Library Letter. Those are all in your packets and part of the public record. Next is public comments. Don't think we have anybody speaking. For those that didn't hear, Ms. Elliott's here. We're gonna have her come up during older new business. Reports of city officials and staff. Mayor's report, Mayor Eber.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I really don't have any else in addition to my mayor's report, but do you want to remind everybody that this Wednesday is spaghetti dinner and it's five o'clock, five to seven thirty. Friday night begins the first music in the park of the year, goes from six to nine. And coming up, thank you, coming up in first week of June, we have a fishing derby, which is a new event, and that's gonna be June the third from eleven to three P. M. at How Pond, which is in the Canal Point Industrial Park. And I do have a proclamation. All I gotta do is find it, so.
Mayor, I think it's on my desk. I can go grab it.
Okay.
Is it on the front one or the back?
The front one.
We can just move that to older new business.
Sure.
Yeah.
Motion to approve mayor's court report. Or no, we don't have any?
Second.
Second.
Motion was made to approve the mayor's court report by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Fairfield County Sheriff, Sergeant Walker.
Thank you. I do not have a written report for you this evening, but I'd be happy to take questions if you have any.
Hey, who patrols Lithopoulos out in front of, Lithopoulos right out by the middle school? Is that you guys or is that Madison Township?
That's us.
That is you? Okay, gotcha. And then I saw that there's twelve parking tickets on here. I just wanna say thank you because the residents over there at the condominiums do appreciate the efforts that we're making to keep diesels from idling next to their homes.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Charleston Lakes, that's the place.
Thank you, Sergeant Walker. Law Director, Mr. Boggs.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I did have a written law director's report this week referring to the setting of a hearing on approval of a joint economic development district contract. So in that, the request is for council to set a public hearing on that contract for June nineteenth at five thirty P. M., which would be before your work session on that evening. This is to comply with a thirty-day notice period operating under the JED statutes. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that, but otherwise, I would request council to move to set that hearing date for June nineteenth at five thirty P. M. And we will get the newspaper publication out.
So moved.
I just have a quick question. That's the one with Violet Township and the DHL area?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
You said that was June nineteenth, right?
Yes.
Finance Director, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Along those same lines, we are required to have a public hearing for the tax budget, and so we're not having two public hearings on the same night. I would like to do the tax budget public hearing at your next meeting. All this is, is where I give my presentation to you. So if council isn't agreed, it's we'd like to do that at five thirty P. M. on Monday, June fifth.
Everybody good with that? Questions for Mrs. Jackson?
I have one other thing. I just wanted to very briefly touch on the fact that we've held two of our four pool membership open houses, and they've gone very, very well. So we have another one scheduled for tomorrow night from five to seven P. M. and this Sunday from three thirty to five thirty P. M. After that, people will be required to come into our office during normal business hours in order to complete their membership. So I highly encourage anyone who can make it to these next two drives to do so. We will get you in and out as quickly as possible. You will have your picture taken, you will have your cards, and as soon as the pool opens next Friday, you'll be able to scan yourself in and have a grand old time. We also are doing one tomorrow during the day at senior lunch to help out those who may be interested in purchasing a senior membership, so. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for having hours that are convenient for families.
We try to do different days of the week and different times to accommodate as many people as we possibly could, so.
That's great. Thank you very much.
I'll make the motion for the public meeting on June fifth at five thirty P. M.
I'll second. Motion was made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Public Service Director, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Just a couple of items to add to my written report. This weekend, there was a tire drive in partnership with Madison Township and Franklin County Public Health. There were a hundred and thirty people through the line and approximately eight hundred tires. That was from the Madison Township area. Last weekend, the Lions Club cleaned up, they do the interchange, cloverleaf out there. They picked up twelve bags, and then we've been working with the, with the VFW on a hometown heroes banner program, so that will be hopefully, so hopefully starting here before long. I think that at their Thursday night, last Thursday night meeting, they approved the design, so we're working with Ms. Woodruff on getting some of that materials going for the registration of it.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Wanted to note that KDC One, who operated on Winchester Boulevard, they have ceased operations there. They had lost their contract with the entity they were providing services for, so that makes sixty thousand square feet available again for sublease, so they've completely cleared out of that. They had about a hundred employees that worked in that operation. Most of those were absorbed back into their location in either Groveport or New Albany, and so there wasn't employee loss as a result of that. But we are looking for another tenant in that area. And then Turbo Wash is, has notified us that they're gonna proceed with construction. They've paid for the permits and picked that up, so that one's been out there for a while. It's going next to Panera, and so they should break ground here in the next few weeks on that. Be happy to answer any of the questions you will have.
Mr. Hare, that, the KDC One, was that the facility that we visited that did the Tide Pods for P. and G.?
Yes.
And sort of described themselves as an innovation test bed for packaging?
Yes.
So there wasn't, if I recall, there isn't a ton of automation already in that building. Is that correct?
Correct. They've basically cleared out any of the equipment that they had in that facility.
Okay.
And so it's just a shell again, and they're offering that for sublease.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Hare, with the turbo car wash going in, is there, is that the end between the bank at the, the credit union at the end, and then the car wash, and then Panera, that'll all be taken?
No, there's, there's one additional parcel that will be between the car wash and the right back credit union.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
One more question. Any updates from Ohio Health on their recent acquisition?
No, the mayor and I have a call scheduled with them for late this month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Next, we have resolutions. There are none on the agenda this evening.
We have two on there.
Oh, I'm sorry. There, I'm looking at my paper that doesn't have them on there. We've got resolution twenty-three dash zero one five. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
No, no, that one.
Zero one six. I'll get it right.
A resolution establishing the compensation for the office of the mayor of the city of Canal Winchester for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
And I believe the sponsor is Mr. Shea.
I would like to vote on A.
Forty thousand?
For forty thousand before fifty thousand.
And just to confirm, you're leaving the car allowance as is written at five hundred in family insurance versus single. That was your request, correct?
You want it single, didn't you?
I want it single. You want it family. The rest of us get single. That's why I said single.
And I'm the only one that's not married, so I'll take, I'll do single.
Okay, so five hundred, leave the five hundred dollar car allowance, single insurance.
Move to change.
Move to amend.
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 To, to remove, let me pull this particular one back up here.
To remove the.
The family coverage eligibility.
Or family coverage.
So just for our purposes, the forty thousand dollar salary, the five hundred dollar travel allowance, single, is sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars in compensation.
So.
Second.
Move to adopt, but, okay, I'm gonna need a vote on that one, for the amendment.
Okay, so what motion do I have on the table?
Motion to amend ordinance two-three-oh-one-six-A to remove for family coverage from section two, paragraph A.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Milliken?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there another motion?
Yeah, I move to adopt resolution two-three-oh-one-six-a.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Milliken?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, no more resolutions this time, correct? Good? All right. No ordinance since this evening, third, second, or first readings?
Point order.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parliamentarian, do we need to do anything with, we need to remove twenty-three-oh-one-six from the agenda, correct? Because we've moved it forward to council, so it's still hanging out. There's an open item. Or do they run concurrently because it's an alpha?
So that, the way that I drafted it up was as a substitute for twenty-three dash oh-one-six. So that was substitute A. They would be, its adoption would eliminate the consideration of the original twenty-three dash oh-one-six.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
Okay. Counsel reports. We have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May thirtieth, at six P. M. We have public hearing Monday, June fifth.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can't interrupt. Do we have a schedule for that? Is there items?
So the item that.
Maybe I missed that.
Yeah, you weren't here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the item that I brought up and, you know, we can cancel it still if we want to, because I think it was brought up that we could have our own individual conversations about this topic with Mr. Hare and Mr. Moore, but I was hoping to maybe discuss code enforcement and the like.
Okay.
So if that's okay with everybody.
I think it's important because our city is growing, more people, there will be more questions. I think it's important for us to have the discussion in an open forum.
Were we including landmarks in this?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna talk about historical and landmarks. And then I actually called Mr. Hare last week and asked, or the week before, one of, somewhere between the last meeting now, and asked him to, if he and Mr. Moore would look at fencing types that might be aesthetically appropriate for like the historic district, because that's something we've talked about before, and wanna see if we wanna look at that as a body too. So I've asked him to look into that.
Okay.
Because it was part of landmarks.
I'd also like to kind of have, drill down on the preservation district and the historic district.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
Mr. Hare, did you have any additional questions for us on that? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so public hearing Monday, June fifth, at five thirty for the twenty-twenty-four tax budget, and then a work session and council meeting that same evening, six and seven o'clock, and then June nineteenth, JED contract, public hearing. CW Human Services, Mr. Walker.
For the month of April, Human Services served four hundred and thirty people and provided six thousand four hundred and fifty meals. They are continually serving new clients each day that they serve. They foresee the numbers increasing, increasing all year long, looking for, to hire a seventh driver to help accommodate for the increase in their senior transportation program. They're very thankful for the city's support and funding to make the service free and possible to our residents. Senior prom was such a huge success and well-attended. The theme was Cinco de Mayo this year, and there was a meal and dessert to go along with the theme, and if you could, they're asking if you could share a bit of what you experienced, that would be great. CW Student Council and Spanish Club did a wonderful job, and they provide transportation to several seniors so they could attend the prom. Events and fundraisers, every Tuesday for the month of June, Loose Rail will be donating ten percent of its profits to Canal Winchester Human Services. And Brock, the Brock Walk will take place on June eighth and ninth, and bags will go out on the eighth and collect on the ninth. This is from Alitha Mullins, the Director, Human Service.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. CW ICC, Ms. Amos?
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I have nothing new to report. Our next meeting is June twenty-ninth at eleven-thirty A. M. here in council chambers.
Thank you. CW JR D, Ms. Amos and Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea and I will be hosting CW JR D Thursday night, May eighteenth, seven P. M. at town hall. I did ask for Greg to come to the next meeting just to give council an update on that, so if anybody has any specific questions they want answered, please don't hesitate to email me, and I will make sure he gets them answered at the next meeting.
Or just put him on the spot like I do.
Or there's that.
Thank you. Destination Canal Winchester is the chair. The Art on the Canal stroll is this Saturday from noon to six. I did, I don't see Hannah here. I did see the alert went, text alert went out for the road closures, so that's good. There's a large variety of artists, music, and dancing, as well as food trucks. The First Farmers Market will be next Saturday, May twenty-seventh, from nine to noon. For a list of the vendors that we'll be setting up each Saturday, follow the Canal Winchester Farmers Market Facebook page. Vendors are listed each Friday. Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Busker.
Our membership is holding strong at one sixty-four. They recently had eight new members. They're continuing to reach out to ten members each, or ten non-members each week trying to gain membership. We recently, on Friday, May twelfth, had our golf outing. We had about seventy-five in attendance for that. That was sixteen different companies and their representatives at the golf outing. The next event we have coming up is June fifteenth. It's a networking night, and that'll be held here at the community center.
Great. I think each time you reported, those numbers just keep going up, right?
The membership's real close, but we are, we gain a few members, we lose a couple, but it is going up slowly.
Okay.
But I am pleased that, you know, they're reaching out to new members each week trying to increase that number, so they are trying to make improvements.
Great, thank you. Next item, older new business. We've got twenty-three dash zero-zero-eight, deliberation and vote on appeal. At this time, the chair would like to recognize Ms. Tammy Elliott and her husband David. If you approach the podium and you wish to speak.
I'm sorry, point order, didn't, didn't we do this once already? Why are we doing this again?
Yeah, so they were, they had signed in to speak during public comments, and so I wanted to give them enough opportunity to speak, enough time to speak, and then for us to be able to ask any questions. That way we weren't interrupting.
Thank you.
The flow of conversation, I guess.
All right, thank you. So this is a public comment, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Florence first.
I don't think we have really much more to say.
Timer, please.
You know.
Excuse me, one second, please. Timer, please?
I'm gonna allow her to go over three minutes, so.
Okay.
If she wants, if Ms. Pierce wants to set the timer, that's fine.
Yes, I don't think we have a lot more to say. You know, I do want to say, whatever your decision is, you know, I do respect that, and, you know, the role that I play in Canal Winchester as a longtime realtor and a resident of Canal Winchester, but not downtown, I do take a lot of pride, you know, in this community, as you do, obviously. But I still feel that, as my husband said, degrading some of the comments that were made to us, you know, regarding this at the last meeting, and originally, when I spoke to Andrew Moore, when we began this process, he made a comment to me, well, based upon what you paid for the property years ago, it shouldn't matter what you need to spend. That was just so inappropriate. So whatever your vote is, we will respect that because that's just the way that we are. However, I really, you know, one thing I would love to find out from Mr. Boggs is, as a homeowner, and I'm not saying as a, as a homeowner, but I sell homes in Canal Winchester, and if I am ever asked, what are the legal ramifications if we choose to do what we want? And again, I'm not talking about us in particular, but any homeowner that lives in the Historic Preservation District that did not go through the process that we went through, what are the legal ramifications? Because we've already been told that Landmarks does not monitor. It's not their job to monitor. So that's a question that I feel should be public information. What can the city legally do? Is it a fine? Is it a lien on your property? Because I don't feel that if somebody goes and puts twenty-five thousand dollars in their home, and then the Landmarks Commission finds out that they didn't get all this approved, I know that Mr. Lynch made a comment, well, we work with them to get it approved. Well, how many people on Park Street and other homes, how many people would have the money to tear off twenty-five thousand dollars of work and then put another thirty-five thousand? So what would the ramifications be? What would you do to them legally? You know, I understand you want to set a precedence, and so do I, and we wouldn't even have been here to fight this if we were in an area that other people have done, but I feel it's very unfair, and I know life is unfair, but I feel also, in what I do, we have to be so careful about fair housing and discrimination. But, you know, what, what if we weren't Caucasian? What if we were standing here and we made this and you deny it, and they came back and said, well, everybody else on the street is, is white, and you didn't do anything to them, but you're, you're picking on us, per se? That's what I feel as a realtor, because I have to be so careful about things like that, and I just want your eyes opened, and maybe by us fighting this, I'm fighting more for changes versus us saving money in our pocket. Yes, it's an investment property that may be our personal home someday, regardless of whether we're an LLC or we live in it, that had nothing to do with what we wanted to do. We wanted to improve the property. There's many other homes in that neighborhood that needs improving, and maybe if it were removed from the Preservation District like there's been talked about, more people would do with, to improve their property, because very few people can afford to do the style of remodeling that Mr. Lynch does. And so maybe we can open your eyes, that they aren't monitoring this. It's not fair. It's not fair to people like us that come and we do the process and do what's right, and it's, it's not. And that really leaves a very bad taste in my mouth, representing this community and selling this community, because more than, just like all of you, I want this to remain a lovely community like it is. But things have, things have to change, and the comments that were made were not fair, and again, I do, I would like to know what the legal ramifications are for us as a homeowner, for anybody as a homeowner, and council needs, they need to stick to it, and they need to do it. You know, can you get those, what those are, or, or don't we know?
This is, I call, just comments at this time.
Yeah, but that is something that I feel.
Can I just suggest calling the sitting?
Well, so at this time, ma'am, if, if you're done speaking, I'll open it up for council discussion. So, Mr. Walker, have you had a comment or?
No.
No? Okay.
I think I just did those.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Hare can comment to some of the questions. I know that when I've asked Mr. Moore in the past, I've had him explain some of this to me, but I don't know if Mr. Hare can just explain it to council as what ramifications could be included.
Yeah, I'm not qualified to speak on legal ramifications in a pending case in front of us.
of us. I would defer to Mr. Boggs on any of that.
Right. So I can, well, I can address both as to the current appeal and as to generally the remedies that are available to the city for zoning type issues, which is what this ultimately would be. So before you, on the appeal, is the question of just whether to affirm or reverse what the Landmarks Commission determined on the Elliott's appeal. And so if you were to affirm the Landmarks Commission, the Elliott's would have the right to appeal that determination to either the Franklin County Environmental Division or the Franklin County Court of Common Pleas, and it would move through an administrative appeals process there. If you were to reverse Landmarks Commission, then other property owners theoretically could appeal that, but because none showed up, no one who was an aggrieved party, I believe, showed up and testified against in the public hearing, there'd be no appeal route for if you reverse the Landmarks Commission and granted their certificate of appropriateness. So that's the legal steps in this particular appeal process. As a general matter, if somebody does work without getting the certificate of appropriateness in the historic districts, the city can file complaints in the mayor's court, which are punishable as misdemeanor offenses. So those can include fines, potentially even jail time. I believe they are fourth-degree misdemeanors. So that's a fine up to $250 and up to 30 days in jail. That jail time can be suspended, and the court would order, as a condition of suspending that jail time, that remedies be made to the property to bring it into compliance. The other option that would be available to the city would be to file a civil action in the Franklin County Environmental Court, and through that action, the city could ask the court to order that property be brought into compliance. So that could be something as drastic as tearing off, tearing off work that was done without the required permits. It could be setting a timeline for people to do that, and if they fail to do it, finding them in contempt of court. It can kind of really go from there in Environmental Court.
Mr. Boggs, is there any statute of limitations on any violations?
So for the mayor's court, the way that the code is written is that every continuing day of non-compliance is a new violation. So you never really- Sorry.
It never stops being out of compliance, so it's always going to be in, there is no statute because every day that passes, it's out of compliance.
Until it's ruined.
Is a new day.
Right, right. For the civil injunction, it would, that's a little bit of a different question because it goes to, it operates under a different set of legal principles and a different statute of limitations.
Is there any statute of limitations on the opposite end for somebody who's done it, and then somebody reports them? Is there a timeframe? Is there, I mean, I guess I'm just looking to see-
In, in theory, a mayor's court complaint could be filed on a violation that occurred, you know, five years ago. You know, a shed that was put in the yard without the required permits five years ago, 10 years ago. Every day that it remains there is a violation, a separate violation. And so if that were reported, the city could file a complaint in mayor's court as to that. Honestly, as to the civil case, from a practical perspective, we could probably move forward with that as well. It's just, the analysis are a little different, so I'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
We did fully examine that neighborhood in terms of who has applied for landmarks improvements, what improvements have been made in the last 20 years, what we had through photographic evidence back to 2007. It looks like there were five landmarks cases that were approved in that area. Of those five, two of those were adding vinyl siding. They also had a case where it was denied. And then there are four cases that were identified where people did not receive certificate of appropriatenesses. Everything from adding a section of vinyl fencing on a home on Beck Street to someone added shutters on their home without approval. And then one case of the applicant adding vinyl siding to a garage, an accessory building. And then there's a case of a home sometime between November of 2019 and May of 2020. So right at the beginning of COVID, there was an applicant that replaced the siding on their home, and it's approximately across the street from the applicant's home. And they did not receive a permit to do so.
So we got a bunch of people that have done it without permits?
We have four cases that we identified back to 2007.
Since 2007.
Correct.
Yeah, our neighbor just put, I think it was last fall, just put all new windows in, and they're not the kind that they're, I mean, and again, I know-
You can't, you can't determine that from photos. You wouldn't be able to determine windows, you know, unless there's a major change.
Well, it sounds like we've got a problem with consistency of enforcement.
Yeah, and so that's why I think, I hope that you picked up on that from our discussion regarding the Committee of the Whole meeting coming up. That, that whole meeting, topic of conversation was birthed from this. And I mean, this isn't the first case, you know, that we've had before us in this situation. And, you know, I personally would like to remedy it. It's not fair, but-
But I think before going on and saying what is or isn't fair for purposes of this current appeal, I want to, I want to make sure that we're understanding counsel in one sense with respect to the Elliott's appeal as sitting as a tribunal, a quasi-judicial body. So, and then on the other sense, you act as policymakers with regard to landmarks, commissions, boundaries, their criteria for approval, et cetera. So if, right now, this is on your agenda for deliberation of the appeal and potentially a vote on the appeal. So if you are in that mode, I would encourage you to stick to that mode and the public hearing testimony you took in last week, as well as the criteria in your code to evaluate Landmarks Commission's decision.
Okay.
If you want to, you know, continue that discussion to, for example, June 5th after the Committee of the Whole on landmarks, you could do that and still be within your 60-day-
That wasn't, that wasn't my intention.
So what is our timeframe for casting a vote?
You have six, under your code-
Okay.
-which is your own code, so you could waive the timing requirements if you wanted to. You have 60 days from the filing of the notice of appeal from Landmarks Commission to issue a decision. The appeal was filed April 6th, so 60 days from April 6th would be June 5th.
Do we see need to-
So we have, so the next, well-
Push it back, or can we, do we just do this tonight?
I personally would like to leave it on and not vote on it this evening until we have our Committee of the Whole meeting.
I would agree with Mrs. Amick because-
Okay.
There are several things here. One, we have a code that was written by previous councils that, but it is still the code and it is still the law of the city that we're supposed to follow and that. But I do understand their perspective as the property owner. I mean, I'd be fit to be tied if somebody told me what I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't do with my property. I really would. Now, I mean, I've lived in neighborhoods with homeowners associations. I don't live in those anymore. You know, I try to pick where I live so I don't have that kind of restriction, but unfortunately, they're, they have an investment property that's in that area, but we've got inconsistency of the application of the code. I think it would be better to wait until we have that discussion. I think you might be more satisfied with the results if you can be patient with us, Mrs. Elliott.
Yeah, we just don't want to drag it out too long because it does take time with contractors, and we really, you know, want to get this done because it is, you know, an eyesore in the, in the community and-
You want it to get done this summer?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, but, you know, again, we do appreciate, and I think it's opened up your eyes, that there are, are issues, and hopefully it can-
I, for one, very much appreciate your willingness to try to do the right thing and follow the processes. So thank you for going to the diligence to do that.
Well, when I believe in something, I, you know, I'm a fighter. I believe in what I believe in, and I do respect the codes, but when they're not being followed and nothing is being done, then that's-
They're not being applied equally.
Right, exactly.
I do appreciate her husband's little chuckle when she said, "I'm a fighter." He gave you the little smile.
Yeah.
And we, I, I agree with-
He's my boss, he knows. I mean, I, yeah, I do what I believe in, and, you know, I'm honest and ethical and, you know, it just-
Yeah, and I, I agree with Mrs. Amick. I think there's, we've all said over the past couple of years, there's several questions that we need to get answered. There's several things we want to look at. So I would appreciate your patience. I realize it's not what you prefer right now.
Well, no, I mean, I would rather, you know, you have the conversation and do what you, get the answers to your questions from the other parties and, yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
I actually just have one question. I'm not against, you know, delaying it. I just, I'd like to know the why. And I guess it, nothing coming from that Committee of the Whole meeting is going to change any circumstances immediately that's going to benefit their situation. So I guess I just want to understand the reasoning, why waiting until after that meeting if nothing, none of the circumstances surrounding this applicant is going to change.
Because we might be able to change the code.
But-
We might choose to change the code. We might choose to move in a different direction.
Or remove that from the Preservation District.
Yeah, but then none of that would happen immediately, right? That would still have to-
Mr. Boggs says that we can override our own rule, extend the 60 days out in order for us to make accommodations, should we feel that that's the appropriate step. And we can modify it to give ourselves a little extra time to modify anything we felt needed changed overall.
Okay.
Not just for one person, but in general.
Okay.
And I think the bigger issue is more of the unequal application of the code in the historic and preservation areas.
Yeah, that's, like I said, I just wanted to understand the why and make sure that I had everything I understood. Mr. Boggs, if you have-
Mr. Milliken, can I say one thing?
Yes.
I just want to be real careful about, you know, there's a, there is, with all due respect to Mr. Shea's comment and Ms. Elliott's comment about unequal application of the code, there's difference between unequal application of the code and enforcement of this or any other code based upon the resources that are available and assigned at any time. So just because prior non-compliance with the code was not immediately identified or the city may choose not to pursue it given the passage of time, does not mean from a legal perspective that the code is not being equally applied. Everybody is being treated under legally fair and equal terms, but there are resource constraints with regard to monitoring and enforcement that just are reality that the law accepts.
Understood.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
You want me to read his proclamation?
Oh.
Oh.
We almost forgot.
Back up.
Can we do that?
We're doing a good job.
Yeah, we're only halfway through. We haven't finished it, so we can-
Pardon?
Well, I, I'll take my yes back.
Yeah, because we're not finished, we can-
Want me to read it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'll make sure-
Mr. Boggs, just give us a look.
Oh, okay.
Motion to adjourn, whoever made it.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw mine, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
This is new business. Where our Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital and important to sustainable and resilient communities, to the communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Canal Winchester. Whereas this infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is a public, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Canal Winchester to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, resolved, I, Michael Eber, Mayor of the City of Canal Winchester, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week.
Go to the Public Works folks.
All of y'all.
Ms. Woodruff has quite a social media campaign planned for next week, so keep an eye out for that.
Cool.
Is this going to be like the skeleton? We really enjoyed him.
That was fun.
And kudos to all the Public Services employees. You guys do a fantastic job.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Shea.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Timeout, 7:47.
Thank you, Elliott.